Alrighty, looks like we are up and running. Everything's working. Alright, so welcome to a little general maths study session on Unit 3. Hopefully, we are all studying hard for our IA2 exam that's probably coming up. If you have any questions at any time or just want to say hi, feel free to pop any of your questions into the comments. I am checking them as we go, keeping an eye on them. So if there's anything that I say at any point or anything I do that you're not sure about, please put a comment in the chat and I will be keeping an eye on that so I can answer your questions straight away. Okay. It's a rainy day here in Brisbane, so why not do some study? Okay, so I had lots of requests for Earth geometry stuff today. So that's what we're mostly focusing on, Earth geometry, and we'll do a little bit of time zone stuff at the end, okay? So feel free to jump in and out as you wish and this session goes up on my channel after a while. It takes a while for YouTube to process the video and then it goes up on my channel after that, so you can always come back and look at it later. Alright, that should be enough time for everyone to join, so let's get started. So latitude and longitude is where we need to start. So the entire Earth, we have covered in an imaginary grid system, okay? These are imaginary lines, but it makes it so that we are able to locate points on the globe, okay? So the lines that go sort of vertically like this, we call longitude, and the lines that go horizontally, we call latitude, and together they make this whole grid system around the world, okay? So we need to add some numbers to that, so the prime meridian here that passes through Greenwich in London is the zero line of longitude, okay? So the reason why they get to be zero is because Greenwich, England is where the Royal Observatory is, and they're the ones that came up with this system, so they made themselves zero. So we then, once we start at zero, we then move east this way and west that way, okay? So this would be 10 degrees east, 20 degrees east, etc., and it keeps going round until you get to the other side here, which you can just see peeking up, which is where the international date line is, okay? That's important for our time zone unit because that's where a day starts and ends, okay? So that's longitude. For latitude, our zero line is the equator. Okay, so there's zero degrees, and then it increases north and south. So this might be 10 degrees north and this might be 10 degrees south, okay? So that's kind of how that works. The North Pole would be 90 degrees north and the South Pole would be 90 degrees south, okay? So that's kind of very basically how latitude and longitude work. When you put that on a flat map, you get something that looks like this, okay? So I've dug through all the mock and sort of sample assessment that the QCWA has put out, because the best way to learn some of this stuff is sometimes just by doing some questions and figuring them out, okay? So let's try and find the town with the coordinates closest to 28 degrees south and 115 degrees east. So let's start with 28 degrees south. Okay, so I can see very clearly, 24 degrees south is this line and 32 degrees south is this line, okay? So I need to divide up, I need some extra lines to find 28 degrees south, don't I? So I sort of think, well, how many divisions would there need to be between 24 and 32? So that would be eight divisions, okay? With 28 being right in the middle, wouldn't it? Okay, so if I do something like this. And I am sort of just estimating here. So 24, that would be 25, 26, 27, 28, 29, 30, 31, we get the idea? Okay, feel free to put questions in the chat if you have any, if you're not sure what I'm doing, but that basically shows me that my 28 degree line is sort of roughly there, okay? Except sort of it's a curvy line, so that makes it a little bit harder to draw, so something like that, okay? Now, I need my other point, which is 115 degrees east, okay? And once again, I can look at my lines and I can see, well, there's 114 and there's 120. So there are six points in between those two lines, okay? So I'm going to divide up the space between them into sort of six points. Something like that. So that would be 15, 16, 17, 18, oh no, I need to do that again. Something like that, there we go. There's 90, so there's 117-ish there. Something like that, okay? Sorry, we went 115, not 117, let me try that again. 115. So that one, just kind of trying to run it parallel. Okay, so let's see which town is the closest to those two points. Our options are Laverton here, that's nowhere near, Maura, that's here, that's on the 115 line, but it's not close to the 28 line. Mount Magnet is over here and Mullaway is here. So you can see, Mount Magnet is on the 28 degree south line, but it's not close to the 115 degree east line. So our answer there is D, okay? Anyone have any questions about how I got that answer? Okay, well, your turn now, okay? So there's your map. I want you to tell me which city is closest to 21 degrees north, 31 degrees east. Okay, have a look at the scales on the side and see if you can figure out which one is closest to those points. I'll give you a couple of minutes to do that and then I'll give you the answer. Okay, so the answer to this one is 8, okay? Because if I look at these different places, I've got Tanta here, I don't know how to pronounce these ones. These are my options, okay? And you can see that, I think this one here is supposed to be a trick question, so if you went to 31 this side of the line instead of this side, okay? So you can see this is about where 31 degrees north would be and this is about where 31 degrees east would be, okay? Alright, let's try this one here. This time, you're given a location and you have to tell me the coordinates, okay? So have a go at that one. Can we all see Cubipedi there? This one here, use the dot that says Cubipedi, and I'd like everyone to have a go at writing its latitude and longitude, okay? We always state the latitude first with a comma and then the longitude. Don't forget to say whether it's in the southern or eastern hemispheres, that it's in the southern and eastern hemispheres, okay? Give that a go. You can hear rumbling in the background, that's just the thunder, there's a big storm in Brisbane at the moment, just ignore that. Feel free to post any questions you have in the chat if you're getting stuck on something and I'll give you my answer in about 30 seconds. Okay, so here's what I did. I kind of went, well, halfway between 20 and 40 would be 30, and you can see if I just kind of draw that line out, it's not quite 30, it's a little bit less, okay? So the answer I have is 28 degrees south. Now, if you put 27 or 29, I believe that would still be accepted as a correct answer. There's like a one degree allowance either side, so if you put 27 or 29, you can also give yourself a tick there, okay? But I had 28 degrees south. And then, if I look here, that would be 130 there and sort of halfway again would be 135, and that just about sort of lines up with that way, so the answer there is 135 degrees east. Once again, if you said 134 or 136, you can still count that as correct, okay? Now, I do put brackets around mine. Oh, the question from the QCWA practice exam, yeah, sure. Okay, I'll get that up in just a second. Okay, so just what I was saying, make sure you have a comma in the middle, and I always like to put brackets around it, but they're not necessarily, you know, you're not going to lose marks if you don't put the brackets in, but I do that because they are an ordered pair like on a Cartesian plane, if you know what I mean. So that's that answer, okay? Let me just, I'm just going to stop streaming for one second, well, not stop streaming, um, stop screen sharing for one second while I get that question for you. Okay, good to go, let's try this again. Oh, question 11, sorry, I've grabbed the wrong one, I see what you mean now. Yeah, we might have to go through that one at the end, Michaela. Because I've had some other requests that I want to get to first, okay? Let's carry on then. We will come back to question 11 at the end, if that's alright with you. Because I had a question about, specifically about converting between degrees and minutes and a decimal of a degree, okay? A common problem, okay? So once we get past sort of those kind of big scale maps, once you start zooming in, you have to start using more precise locations, okay? So for example, Canberra's latitude and longitude, because it's a sort of single city, is can be said as 39, 35 degrees and 17 minutes south and 149 degrees and 8 minutes east, okay? So see how there's a little bit more detail there, okay? Because when you sort of zoom in on a local level, even one minute can be a huge amount of distance, okay? So one degree is equal to 60 minutes, okay? So that's what you've got to remember. So when I'm converting, I like to think of, oh, I'm not screen sharing, oh damn, thank you. Hang on. That should be better now, give me a sec. Boomerang. There we go, that's what we want, okay? So. That's what I was saying before, 35 degrees and 17 minutes south, 149 degrees and 8 minutes east, okay? And so the thing you have to remember there is one degree is equal to 60 minutes. Okay, great, thank you for letting me know about that, EB Jane. Okay, so here's how I like to think of it. I like to remember a few key markers, okay? So I like to think of, well, 34.5, 0.5 would mean half of a degree, okay? And I sort of sometimes equate that to time because there's 60 minutes in an hour as well. So half of an hour, so 0.5 is the same as half, half of an hour would be 30 minutes. So that's sort of how I remember that conversion, because if you have a few key sort of landmarks in your head, it can help that conversion make a little bit more sense, okay? So half of a degree would be 30 minutes, a quarter of a degree would be 15 minutes, three quarters, 0.75, would be 45 minutes, a third would be 20 minutes, okay? So that's kind of how I remember some, some key points there. But here's how you actually need to convert if it's not an easy to remember decimal. So what about 0.9 for example? So if you have 34.9 degrees, well, what you can do is do 0.9 times 60 gives you 54. Nine tenths of 60 is 54 minutes, okay? So that's how I convert personally, I just take whatever the decimal is, I ignore the 34 part, whatever the decimal is, and I multiply it by 60 and I get 54 minutes. So that's how I convert between them, okay? Now, fortunately, if you get stuck on that stuff, your calculator can help you out, okay? So I've got the instructions here for the TI30 calculator, which is the green one, and for the Casio, which is sort of a, you know, black and grey one. Does anyone have a calculator that's not one of those two models? If you have a different one, let me know because I'll have to look into how to do the conversions here. I know my students use the green calculator, but I also see quite a few people using the Casio, so those are the sort of the two main ones. So grab your calculator out for a second. And once you've got your calculator there, we're going to find some of these buttons and make sure everyone knows how to use it properly, okay? So if you've got the green calculator there, let's do this first one, 32.45 degrees and you're converting that to degrees minutes, okay? So what you would do is type in 32.45 and then you've got this button here that looks like this. Button looks like this, but above it is written angle. Okay, so if you press the second function, which is a grey button, and then the angle button, you find a list, and if you scroll all the way down or press number 6, you will get this thing here that says DMS. Now that stands for degrees, minutes, seconds, okay? So if you click on that and then press enter, what you should get is 32 degrees, 27 minutes, you'll actually get that on there as well, seconds, but we don't need to worry about seconds in this course, we only go to minutes, okay? For part B, to go the other way, you type in 44, you press that second function angle button, and then this time, instead of number 6, you choose number 1. That should put a degree symbol on your screen. Then type 32, press your second function angle button again, and now select option 2. Once you do that, you should get the minute symbol after it should, so it should now look like this. You should get that symbol, and then if you press enter, it will turn it into a decimal for you, okay? So that's how you do it on the green calculator. On the Casio calculator, you've got a single function button that looks just like this, okay? You've got the main button, it's actually much easier to do, it's less button pressing on the Casio than it is on the TI, the green, green calculator, okay? So you've got that button there, so try all of that, okay? This is going to be really helpful in a minute when we have to start adding or subtracting degrees and minutes, okay? So make sure we've got this down pat. Okay, let me know in the chat, is anyone having difficulties using their calculator to do these calculations? Now's the time to speak up because we're about to move on to some questions where we have to apply this. Okay. I'm going to assume now that everybody knows exactly what to do with their calculator and they're feeling super confident, because you haven't told me otherwise. Let's give one of these questions a go, okay? Because you can see, we've got some latitudes and longitudes with degrees and minutes, so we need to be able to know what to do. Okay. Alright, so get your formula sheets out if you've got one. If not, open another tab in Google, QCWA General Maths Formula Sheet, and it will bring one up. And you'll notice on that formula sheet, there are two different formulas for calculating the distance, okay? It's under the, I think it's in the second section, the first section, under mensuration. You've got two formulas, one that looks like this. And one that looks like this. Okay, they are both used for calculating distances on the Earth's surface, but in different situations, okay? So this first one here is for great circles. Okay, or when they have the same longitude. Hang on, let me give myself a little bit more space here. Lovely. Okay, have the same longitude. The second formula here is for small circles. Where two points have the same latitude. Okay. Now, the reason they're called great circles and small circles is because if you imagine a globe, all your lines of longitude, like so, they pass through the north and the, both the northern pole and the southern pole, south pole and north pole, okay? So all those lines are as long as possible, okay? So that's why they're called great circles, they're the biggest circles you could possibly get. Whereas if you have circles like latitude, like this, notice how they're not the biggest circle you could possibly get, which is why they're called small circles, okay? So basically, if two points have the same longitude, okay, like this one here, see how that has the same longitude as that, okay? We can see that those two points must be on the same longitude, must be on a great circle, okay? So looking at this question, I know I have to use this first formula here because they have the same longitude, they're on a great circle, okay? So that means the only other thing I need to do is calculate the angular distance, okay? So the angular distance is found by looking at the latitude in this case, so if the longitude's the same, I look at the latitude. So if the longitude's the same, I look at the latitude and I can, uh, calculate the angular distance there. Now, when you're calculating the angular distance, if they're in the same hemisphere, you need to subtract. If they're in different hemispheres, you need to add. Okay, so let me explain that. You should write that down somewhere. But essentially, if I draw my little diagram again, okay, we've got two points on the same line of longitude. Here's the equator. Let's say I've got a point there and a point there. And let's say this one is sixty degrees north. And this one is, say, forty degrees south. And here's zero. You can see to get the full angular distance between them, I would have to add sixty and forty to get the distance between them. Whereas if I had two that were in the same hemisphere, here's my equator again. Here's my line of longitude. And I've got one there and one there. Let's say this is forty degrees north. And this is sixty degrees north. Because they're in the same hemisphere, I would have to take away to find this distance between them. Okay, so if they're in the same hemisphere, you subtract. If they're in different hemispheres, add. Okay, so if I go back up to my question, have a look at the two latitudes between Geelong and Kusiro. Are they in the same hemisphere or are they in different hemispheres? Okay. And what should I do to find the angular distance? Okay, the answer is they're in different hemispheres, so I need to add them. Okay, so let's do that. Thirty eight degrees and nine minutes plus forty three degrees and one minute. And here is where your calculator skills come in handy, okay? Can everyone please type this into your calculator and find the angular distance between those two points? Okay. You can also do this one pretty easily by hand. But there's others that are not done quite so easily, so it's good to be able to use your calculator now. Let me know in the chat if you are having trouble doing that. Have a thirty seconds and then I'll tell you what the answer is. Okay, the answer is eighty one degrees and ten minutes, okay? How did we go? Hopefully, we were all able to get that in our calculators. Okay, now we just need to find the distance. So now that we know the angular distance, we can do the rest of the formula. One, one, one point two times eighty one degrees and ten minutes. Okay, and you can type that into your calculator like that. So on the green calculator, you type in one, one, one point two times eighty one. Second function angle button, select option one, that'll put a degree symbol in. And then type ten, second function angle, option two, will put a minute symbol in. Okay, so everyone have a go at doing that in your calculator. And write down your final answer. The question said to round it to the nearest kilometer. So have a go at rounding that correctly as well. There's your answer, rounded to the nearest kilometer. How did we go? Hopefully, everyone was able to get that answer. Remember, if there's anything that you're not sure about, pop it into the chat. I am keeping an eye on it. Okay, let's try another. Okay, here's our next question. Okay, have a read through that. Okay, so we're finding the shortest distance between Seoul and San Francisco. Okay, so the first thing you should be doing is looking at the coordinates and asking yourself, do they have the same latitude or do they have the same longitude? Okay, and the answer is, they have the same latitude this time. Okay, so if they have the same latitude, which formula do we need? Write it down. Here's your answer. How did we go? Did we all pick the right formula? Hopefully. Okay. So that's the formula we're aiming for. So there's two things that we need to substitute in here. We need to substitute something into this cos. Uh, the answer is, the latitude goes in there. And now we also need the angular distance. Okay, so let's start by figuring that out first, okay? The angular distance, have a look at your, uh, longitudes. So if the latitudes are the same, look at the longitudes. Are they in the same hemisphere or are they in different hemispheres? They are in different hemispheres. One is in the eastern hemisphere, one is in the western hemisphere. Okay, so if they're in different hemispheres, we have to add them. Okay. So you'll notice these ones are in decimals, okay? Which is perfectly fine, much easier to work with, because you don't need to do all those extra button presses. Okay. Add those two together and you get two hundred and forty nine point four degrees as your angular distance. Now, here's the catch. We are looking for the shortest distance between these two points. Okay. Now, if you think about the world, remember we are going, uh, if this is the world, we are going this way around, okay? So you can actually go this way around the globe or you could go the other way around the globe. There's two different ways you can go around the globe. And if you think about a circle has three hundred and sixty degrees in it, half of that would be one eighty degrees. So to go from there to there would be a hundred and eighty degrees. If your angular, angular distance is greater than one eighty, then you're going the long way around the globe, okay? So if we went, took that to two hundred, you can see there's a shorter way to go, which would be that way. Okay, so our problem here is that number is greater than one eighty. So that is the long way round between the two cities. So we need to find the short way, okay? So the shorter angular distance is going to be three sixty take away our longer angular distance. Okay. So our shortest angular distance is in fact a hundred and ten point six degrees. Okay, that's what we need to substitute into the formula, not two hundred and forty nine point four, because that's the long way round. Okay, so let's try substituting all this in to our distance formula. So distance is going to be one, one, one point two cos, and instead of theta, we're going to put the longitude. And we're going to substitute hundred and ten point six into the angular distance. Everyone pop that into your calculator, please. This should be a bit quicker because it's a decimal, so you don't need to fiddle with all those degree and minute buttons. Hopefully, everyone can find their cos button. And we're going to round this answer once again to the nearest kilometer. So a good chance to check if your rounding is correct. The answer is nine thousand seven hundred and forty four kilometers. Uh, where did you get the theta value from? Okay, so uh, in this case, the theta, theta, however you pronounce it, is the latitude of those two points. So I got that from the question here. Thirty seven point six is what I substitute into theta. Okay. Was everyone able to get that answer? Because if you typed all that in but got a different answer, it might be because your, your, um, calculator is on the wrong settings. So let me know if you're not getting the right answer from your calculator. Okay, everyone happy? So we can try another one. Okay. Let's try this one now. Okay, so first of all, we've got Mount Gambier and Bay, Baynesdale, Barnesdale, I don't know how to pronounce it. Okay, so look at your two coordinates. The first thing you should be asking yourself is, do they have the same latitude or do they have the same longitude? Okay, and the answer is they have the same latitude. If that's the case, they have the same latitude, what formula should you be using to calculate the distance? Write it down. It's that one, okay, it has the cos in it. Okay. So the next question you should be asking yourself, well, what do I need to sub in for theta? Well, theta is going to be the latitude, so that figure there is going to go there. Okay, sorted. The other thing we need to substitute is the angular distance, okay? So now that we've established they have the same latitude, look at their longitudes. Are they in the same hemisphere or are they in different hemispheres? The answer is they are in the same hemisphere. They both have east. They're both in the eastern hemisphere, so they're in the same hemisphere, so I need to subtract to find the angular distance. Okay, so I'm going to, uh, I always do the bigger one first because we don't want to end up with a negative number, do we? Because you can't have a negative distance. So I always put the bigger number first. Okay. Everyone get out your calculators and find that angular distance. I'll give you about thirty seconds to do that and then I'll put the answer in. Let me know if you're still having trouble using your calculator. Okay, the answer you should have for that is six degrees and fifty minutes. Okay, hopefully, we were all able to do that in our calculators. If you didn't get that number, let me know and we'll see if we can figure out why. Okay, so now that we have the angular distance, we can type in, uh, da, 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 sorry, not type in, we can substitute into our formula. Remember, instead of theta, we're putting the latitude. Uh, didn't get the correct number. Okay, so, um, Eevee Jane, can you tell me what kind of, what model calculator do you have? Do you have the green TI Texas Instruments or do you have the Casio, which is black? Okay, we have the green calculator. Okay, so, uh, you should be, let's, let's do this together. I would be typing in one, four, seven, and then I'm pressing second function angle. I'm choosing option one, and that should put a little degree symbol after one, four, seven. I then type in thirty seven, second function angle, and this time I choose option two, which should put a minute symbol after the thirty seven. I then press subtract. I press, uh, one forty, second function angle, choose option one, and that puts a degree symbol after one forty. And then I type in forty seven, second function angle, and then I choose option two. Ah, okay, I think I see what the issue is. Did you get six point eight, three, 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 three? If you got the decimal, what you then need to do is convert it back to, uh, degrees and minutes. So without clearing my calculator, I press second function angle and I choose option six this time, which should bring up something that says DMS. The DMS stands for degrees, minutes, seconds. I then press enter and that's when I should get six degrees, fifty minutes and zero seconds, but we don't worry about the zero seconds. Okay. So if you got six point eight, three, 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 et cetera, et cetera, you just have to convert it to degrees, minutes and seconds, seconds, which is option six. Yeah, so you just have to, um, Yeah, so you just have to um, press second function angle again and choose option six. And that should convert it to degrees, minutes and seconds. Uh, Mia says she's getting six degrees and fifty four minutes. Uh, I'm definitely getting six degrees in fifty minutes. So Mia, I would just check your, um, that you've pressed the right buttons in the calculator. It's entirely possible that you've, I don't know, switched some numbers around or just pressed the wrong button. So just double check that one for me, please. It happens to the best of us. Okay, so if we've got all that sorted out, can we go get our calculators out and put our distance formula into our calculators? And then round our answer to the nearest kilometer. The answer should be six hundred kilometers to the nearest kilometer. Okay, hopefully we've got that figured out. Let me know if we've still got any calculator issues. Okay. Now I had a uh, request for a time zone question that involves flight time. Uh, still get the same, oh, I'm not sure why that is Mia. Um, it's weird because it's so close. Um, Mia, Mia, if you still can't figure it out, um, what you can do is uh, take a picture, like take a photo of your calculator and then email it to me. My email address is up the top there. Queensland dot general dot maths dot help at gmail dot com. Email that to me, email a picture to me, just so I can take a look at what's happening on your calculator, because it might be that some of the settings are wrong or something like that. And we'll see if we can get you sorted out. Okay? All right. Okay, so this was my other request uh, about uh, time zones and including flight time. Okay, so let's give this one a go. Uh, I think this is my last requested question and then after that we'll circle back to um, Michaela's uh, question eleven request. Okay, so this one and then one more after that and then we can call it quits. Okay, so Chen works in Taiwan. Taiwan is plus eight UTC. Do we all know what UTC stands for? Uh, UTC stands for, and this is going to seem weird, but it is coordinated universal time. Now, you might notice UTC and coordinated universal time doesn't quite match up. And the reason why that is, is because the French say it in a different order and that's why. Okay, so uh, UTC plus eight means that if we were to draw out our world, okay, uh, here's UTC or GMT, same line. And that's that zero longitude degree line, okay? That's that prime meridian we were talking about right back at the beginning. Uh, that passes through Greenwich in England, where the Royal Observatory is, where they came up with this system. So not only did they make themselves the zero line of longitude, they also made themselves the zero time zone. Okay, so anything to the east of London is plus. So this will be plus one, plus two, plus three, plus four, et cetera, all the way up to plus twelve. There's, I don't want to get bogged down in details, but there is some strange stuff that happens at the international date line, which is here. And then anything west of London is negative, negative one, negative two, negative three, like this. It just kind of looks like a, like a number line from when you were in year seven. Okay, so um, that's uh, what the world looks like. Now, the international date line is where a day starts. Okay, so a day starts right on that international date line, which is opposite the prime meridian. That passes right through the Pacific Ocean. So this first countries to start a day are usually your Pacific island countries. Okay, like Fiji, uh, New Zealand, and then places like Australia. So we're pretty early in the day, whereas places on the western side, like America, uh, have, uh, they are behind us. Okay, so I always draw a little diagram like this when I'm doing these kinds of questions. Okay, to always kind of orientate myself. Okay, so I will mark thereish and say that this is plus eight and this is Taiwan. Mm-hmm, uh, where Chen is. So I just like to put the details of the question on my little diagram here. Omar is in Cape Verde, which is here at negative one. Verde, I don't know, this is where Omar is, okay? It says Chen rings Omar at seven AM Sunday morning in Cape Verde. Okay, so that means that here in Cape Verde, it is seven AM Sunday. Okay? And I need to figure out what's the time over in Taiwan. Okay, so whenever I do these questions, I always draw out a little diagram like this and I put all the details of the question on my diagram just because it helps me to visualize the situation and what's going on. Okay, so uh, first of all, we need to figure out the time difference between them. Okay, uh, and if you think about uh, here's zero, we've got eight hours to here and one hour here. So that's going to be eight hours plus one hour, so a nine hour time difference. Now, you might also see it done like this. Because this is plus eight takeaway, because this is the time difference and difference means takeaway. And negative one, because that's the time zone of Cape Verde. Okay, so you might see it done like that. But really, if you've done this little number lineup, you should be able to reason an answer fairly easily without doing all the extra fancy stuff. Okay, I am all about shortcuts here. Okay, so now we know the time difference, we need to figure out who is ahead and who is behind. Okay, so you have to think, well, Chen in Taiwan is ahead of Omar in Cape Verde. Okay, so what I would have to do is add nine hours to Omar's time to find Chen's time. Because remember Chen is ahead, so I need to add nine hours. So I would write Taiwan time. And I'd say seven AM Sunday, which is uh, Cape Verde time, plus nine hours. Because it's going to be nine hours ahead. Okay, so seven AM plus nine hours gives me four PM on Sunday. Okay? Now, notice the question says determine the time and day. Okay, so you get a mark for nine hours, you get a mark for four PM and you get a mark for Sunday. This is a three mark question. So don't forget to put the day in as well when you do these kinds of questions. Okay? Any questions about that one? Is that fairly well understood? Because we're going to do part B in a second. Okay? Little tip for the exam, if you happen to have a uh, analog watch with you, some people find it easier to count around their watch face uh, to get the time, you know, so seven plus nine hours. You can sort of count that around your clock face, so uh, would encourage that. Because it's very easy to make silly mistakes when you're doing those kinds of questions. Okay, now here's one with flight time. So Chen is hopping on a flight to Cape Verde and he's departing Taiwan at six PM on Tuesday and the flight time is seventeen hours and forty minutes. Okay? So what do we need to do? Well, there's two ways you can do this. I like to convert to uh, from Taiwan time to Cape Verde time first and then add my flight time. But just bear in mind, you could do this the other way around if you want to. You could add the flight time first and then convert the time zone. Whatever makes more sense to you, go ahead and do that. Okay, so I'm going to write departure time in Taiwan. Okay, so the departure time in Cape Verde. Cape Verde, Cape Verde, I don't know, if anyone knows, feel free to tell me. Well, that would be six PM Tuesday minus nine hours. Okay, because remember we established in the question before that Cape Verde or Cape Verde, whoever you say, is behind Taiwan. So we need to take away nine hours. So as Chen is leaving, it is uh, nine AM Tuesday for Omar. Okay? Now we'll find, now that we know that the departure time in Cape Verde is nine AM Tuesday, let's figure out the arrival time. So that's going to be the departure time plus the flight time. And the flight time is seventeen hours and forty minutes. Okay, so nine AM Tuesday plus seventeen hours plus forty minutes. Okay, so once again, if you happen to have an analog clock with you, analog watch on your wrist, you can count around the face of the clock if that helps. Or sometimes what I like to do is I kind of go, well, if I add twelve hours, that would be nine PM. And then I just kind of add the extra, you know, hours and forty minutes that I would need to. Five hours, forty minutes on top of that. Okay? So everyone have a go at writing what you think the arrival time would be. Okay, I've got two forty AM on Wednesday. Okay, it's the next day at that point. Okay, so that's how we do a question that accounts for time zone and flight time. Okay, quite tricky. Okay, I'm just going to stop screen sharing again for a second so I can grab question eleven. Okay, question eleven. All right, so in this question, we've got distance and time zone combined. Okay, this will be our last question unless anyone has some requests at the end. So shortest distance, let's see what we've learnt so far. We've got two coordinates. So the first question you should be asking yourself is, do these two places have the same latitude or do they have the same longitude? The answer is they have the same latitude. Okay, so because they have the same latitude, what formula do we need? Write it down. There it is. Okay, so we know seventy is going to go into the place of theta. But what do we need for our angular distance? So if the latitudes are the same, look at the longitudes. Are they in the same hemisphere or are they in different hemispheres? The answer is they're in different hemispheres. One's in the eastern hemisphere, one's in the western hemisphere. So we need to add. So one twenty eight plus one forty eight. Doesn't matter which way around you write those, you should get the same answer. The answer to that is there it is. Two hundred and seventy six. Now, you should be looking at that number and alarm bell should be going off. Because that number is too big. Okay, that number is greater than one eighty, which means if you used that angular distance, you would be going the long way round the earth. Okay, so what do we need to do to get the correct angular distance? Write it down. You have to take it away from three sixty to get the shorter way, which is eighty four degrees. Now we can substitute that all in. Okay, pop all that into your calculator and let's Okay, pop all that into your calculator and let's see what we get. Okay, this question does not say to round to the nearest kilometer, so I'm just going to round to two decimal places. Because that's just what I do when I'm not told. You know, if they don't tell me, then I just automatically default to two decimal places. So my answer is. Three thousand one hundred and ninety four point seven four kilometers. How did we go? Hopefully we were all able to figure that out. Done that question a couple of times now. All right, now we've got time zones. Now. Do you notice in this question, they don't give us that information like plus A or minus one like they did in the last question? We're not told what time zone it's in. Okay, we're just told what time it is on in Tixi. Okay? So we actually have to calculate this. And the clue is the longitudes, okay? So. Here's how it goes. Remember, there are. Three hundred and sixty degrees in a circle, aren't there? Okay? And how many hours are there in a day? Okay? So if we divide the three hundred and sixty degrees of longitude by twenty four hours. You get fifteen. Okay, so that means every fifteen degrees of longitude. That equates to one hour. Of time difference. Okay, so that's just a little fact that you should remember, fifteen degrees of longitude equates to one hour of time difference. Okay? So we already know from the previous question what the angular distance is. Okay? In this case, we have to use the bigger angle. And that's because while you can travel both ways around the world. Time only goes in one direction around the world because the the earth only spins in one direction. So you always need the original angle for these kinds of questions. So our time difference. Is going to be two seventy six divided by fifteen. Put that into your calculator and tell me how many hours of time difference is there between these two places? The question says to round to the nearest hour. Okay, I got eighteen hours. Okay, so just from their longitudes, I can tell that there's eighteen hours of time difference. Between Dead Horse in Alaska and Tixi in Russia. Okay? Now, I'm going to draw my little diagram again. Okay? My little number liney thing. So here's zero, which is GMT Greenwich Mean Time or UTC same thing, coordinated universal time. This is eastern hemisphere, this is the western hemisphere. So. Here's approximately where Russia is. At, and what was that, one twenty eight degrees east? Okay? And then Alaska's over here. At one forty eight degrees west. Okay? And the question tells us. That it's ten AM in Tixi on Monday, so I'm going to add that to my diagram as well. Okay, and I want to know. What day and time it is in Alaska. Okay? So you should be asking yourself, which place is ahead of the other? Is Russia ahead of Alaska or is Alaska ahead of Russia? Remember, this is where a day starts. The international date line. The answer is that Russia is ahead of Alaska. Okay, so if I want to find Alaskan time, I need to take away eight hours because it's behind. So I'm going to take away eighteen hours from ten AM on Monday. Okay? So have a go at figuring out what time it would be in Alaska. Give you about thirty seconds to do that. Okay, so if you're not sure what to do, you can either make sure you have an analog watch on your wrist and count around eighteen hours. Or you could say, well, twelve hours would make it ten PM on Sunday. And then I just have to deal with the other six hours. So the answer is. Four PM on Sunday. Okay? How did we go? That's all the questions I've got for you today. Unless anyone has any other requests. You're welcome to uh email me at that email address that I put up earlier. Um you can also find me on the Facebook pages. Uh I will probably stream again next Sunday because I know some people still have their exams in week ten, so keep an eye out. Oh, I'm glad I was helpful, EB Jane. Good luck with your exam. Okay? So if there are any other requests, I will bid you all goodbye. Good luck with your studies, all the best, and feel free to contact me if you have any other questions. You're very welcome, everyone. You're welcome, Isabella. Good luck.